I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their public vote, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Hello.
Thanks for coming. The first item on the agenda, oh, do you need the finance committee for this?
Uh, yeah.
Well, if you're gonna skip to Ms. Donna, we have time.
Oh, right, she did just ask me to skip ahead for special note. So, where are you on here, so I can cross you off? Are you on here, Donna?
She is, she is down under the...
What number?
Action and discussion.
Yep, seven...
No, my lie, she's in the fours. She's five four.
Oh, alright, we're gonna skip to a bond for the October storm, one-year note, Donna Whitley. What do I have to do?
Somebody's gonna be paying down fifteen thousand, so we're just reborrowing.
That amount?
Yes.
That's all that's left?
No, we're expecting to be remiss, one thousand of that, but we haven't been...
When does that happen?
We're...
This week.
You don't know when it happens?
We'll see.
And then the town was responsible for the rest.
Okay, so I have a bond here to, let's take a loan out, is that what you say? Take a loan out for ninety-five thousand six hundred dollars left on the October storm.
This is just an extension of what we've been doing for the last two years?
Yeah.
Two years, we paid fifteen thousand dollars.
So, it's a one-year note at point five zero interest.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Where do you want me to sign it?
Sign here and...
On the top? Does it matter what color?
On the backside of her, I've got the hotspot on, but I got, the COA is up too.
It's up or down?
Up.
Okay.
So if you can't get in, let me know, I'll tell you what the hotspot code is, but I got the COA on my mind.
There you go. We can cross you off. Oh, we all have to sign it?
Aye.
Oh, I got it, sorry.
You don't have anything? You can't pick it up?
Oh, maybe, hold on.
If you say something that says Verizon.
I got it, I see that also. I have COA, but I don't have any service with it, and I see Verizon.
Take Verizon.
Now I just need my agenda to load.
Yeah, because that was one of the last things I did before I left. They were supposed to get back to...
Don't worry about it.
This is not Mass Highway, this is Federal Highway Administration. Administered by Mass.
Have everything you need from us? Okay, you're welcome. So we'll go back to the beginning, we have a joint meeting with the finance committee and Vicki Moore, our town accountant, for the fiscal fourteen year end transfers, part four.
Hi there.
Aye, ready when you are.
So this is final, I think she has our copies that are emailed and stuff for, we're down this afternoon, are running very slow, so what I did was I went through and we posted all the payroll for those last two days of June, and I went through and got all recoveries from the different departments of what bills they think that they were going to get by the state, or think that they ordered that they might have ordered some for, not sent in voice, so that I could make sure that everything's included in this analysis here. So, the total is one hundred and thirty thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars and eighty cents.
Yep.
That we are underfunded in these particular accounts.
Do you know what the total is for all of the transfers that were, like, what was the total year-over-budget for the whole year?
I didn't write a total total, but I can figure that out. So here we have, you know, one of the first ones on this list is the selecting expenses, we paid for some NMA bills and debt adds, so it's building inspector and the administrative zip, I'm sure that count negative. Legal expenses were for the last couple of months, legal bills.
Is there anything that we don't know about still that might come, or is this really the only legal number we're thinking?
That's it, because the last bill we got for eighteen hundred and seventy-two dollars was through the month of June thirty.
So is that, is that lower than we kind of thought? Not that it's a good number, but...
Well, that makes us...
Legal?
Yeah.
Eighty-seven thousand give or share?
For the whole year?
One six thousand, that's not about right.
What?
Eighty-something thousand?
Uh, legal is seventy-eight eight-one-eight.
That's pretty well...
And then you'll see gas and electric is over a little, we, we were missing the March Hampshire power bill, but not quite sure what happened to it, so they emailed it and said, "This is overdue, you pay us," and so that's why that is over a little, there was someone in that account, but that's what part of that mortgage is. And, you know, now we switched over to us from gas electric, we didn't get any bills past that March date, but we were missing February twenty-fifth through March twenty-fifth bill, but not quite sure where it ended up, so. The library building expenses is the same type of a situation where SNE, the contract for the ceiling, for the heating and cooling and all that stuff, we somehow do pay the contract amount back in July of two thousand thirteen for the fourteen year. So, I ended up accruing that amount of seventy-six hundred dollars, and they sent us, when they were sending us the bill for two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen contract year, they said, "Oh, by the way, you didn't pay us for last year." And I said, "Oh, okay, well, we'll do that now." So that's why that money went over, because there was enough money in that account to be like when we met last time.
So you just tell the GBE four's money?
It was for two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen year, that should have been paid in July of two thousand thirteen, at the beginning of this fiscal year. We never paid it. But we did get the bill for two thousand fourteen through FY fifteen that will, that, you know, we're just gonna pay now, so. And that one again is seventy-some hundred dollars. Police department expenses, that went over a little due to some fuel charges, and the police had some issues with some of the vehicles those last few days of June. The DARE program was off by some fuel, the chief submitted that made this account over. Communication wages is basically two pay periods, because on average they get about seven thousand dollars per pay period, all, you know, per weeks, and then whatever they paid out in vacation and sick, maybe not get paid sick, it's vacation and holiday, I think, whatever they have left, they get paid fifty percent, and that's also included in that number.
So we, you probably don't have this with you, but happen to know if that number is more than or less than last year?
It is. Less than last year. In two thousand and thirteen, we transferred thirty-six thousand dollars into that account, part of that was retro pay and the increase from the new contract they just signed.
Is that retro pay due to that nine-one-one training, Ed, again?
Uh, I don't believe so. It was for the, it was for the raises last year, February, last February.
Oh, okay, it wasn't the special training for dispatchers to deal with emergency ambulance?
Um, I could, I don't, I don't know.
Because they were supposed to get some money to reimburse, uh, get reimbursed.
We have a nine-one-one grant, and anything that he, we did charge them to that nine-one-one grant for some training this past year, so. So, you know, about seventeen thousand dollars was retro pay for those communication for the, from when we did raise this plus February. For our department wages, I anticipated, you know, the fire chief had given me his credit sheet of what he was going to need, you know, on call and for staffing through the end of June thirtieth, and that's where those department wages came from. The department expenses were from some fuel charges for the last couple of months from the highway department, and EMT wages in the same by, was in, in that same analysis that the fire chief had given me of what he predicted he was gonna need based on the hours that he needed to cover. His anti-licensing certification, certification, I think he just, I think we were just a little short, we originally had transferred money out of that account to cover something else, but the bill came in about twenty-nine dollars higher than I think he anticipated, so. The building inspector's salary is due to the payout of his current vacation, and his expenses are the wireless cell phone bill that he shared with the highway department and they were charging him back for the use of that, plus his June mileage stipend that he got, that he got a refund. Winter roads and winter roads expenses and wages are basically whatever storms we have, that's what we spent in those particular areas.
Do you know if those numbers are higher or lower than last year?
I don't have that. I think they were higher last year, the wages weren't higher because we had that big storm in February.
Yeah, but we get some reimbursement to offset that.
Yeah, we did, we did get some reimbursement, that like thirty...
Wasn't there some reimbursement expected in, on some of these costs too?
I don't know.
Yeah, there is.
I want to ask that question.
Randall was telling me about that.
Okay.
I don't know how much it is, but there's some reimburseings coming from FEMA.
Which what will happen is that will hit next year in fifteen, and we'll get it. For the health expenses, those were because Adam had left and we needed to hire an outside person to oversee, hey, the septic cleaners and the perp testing and all that, so that's, those are the extra costs for her. The library wages, we had transferred some money out of the library account to cover their expenses, and it ended up that they needed a little bit more money for those last, for that last day in June, to pay the workers. Heart commission expenses are just costs that the highway department charged to the park for mowing the fields. Interest on short-term debt was from interest for the Halloween storm, and we borrowed that initial two hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars before we knew how much FEMA and NEMA money we were gonna get, and then borrowing for the North School roof temporarily until the final happens in December. Medicare is, more people are going on Medicare and our costs are just, you know, increasing from that. And then the insurance, the general insurance is the deductible for tried insurance for Medicaid, we need to pay the deductible on that.
And then when you transfer this money out of these other line items, does that leave them all at zero?
Most of them, yes. Okay.
Does anybody have any questions? John? Oh, go ahead, go ahead, too.
So in as much as possible mutual from the departments, if they had other, if they had surpluses in some line items to cover, the line items, if they had overages?
Yes, pretty much I used every penny that was left, not spent.
So each department, to the best of their ability, paid for?
Whatever they had left, I did, I did take those, but it didn't cover some of the stuff that was negative, so.
No, I mean, general highway, highway is highway, and so that he's...
Yeah, there was some, yeah.
And basically covers it.
Some of it, yeah, yeah.
The Volk tuition, they had that much left, that's almost...
There's still some money left in there too.
It's almost positive news.
Yeah, you know, basically it's based on, I mean, when they initially give us their estimate, it's who's got accepted, and then once the kids actually enroll, they will get a bill, physical bill from Smith, I mean, Smith vocational. I'm still waiting on one more bill from the school, but I include that in this number, because there is about twenty thousand dollars left.
In that one?
And I took only, so.
Okay.
The only line I can't touch is elementary school, because their governing body is a school committee, and the school committee decides what they can and can't spend their money, and we appropriate to them, and it's theirs, we can't touch that, so.
Does the board have any other questions about this?
No, but I think this is where, starting, a couple weeks ago, we're gonna have to start looking at this on a monthly basis, so we don't end up here again.
This particular year, we're not gonna see this kind of money next year to take care of any deficits.
Yes, but again...
So we're not gonna see this kind of money next year.
Oh, no, no.
To deal with deficits.
No, no.
I still want things to add, we still didn't get that bill from the workman's comp sort of fire piece we were waiting on yet, we have to do our deductible piece.
Oh, okay.
So that's not on yet, we don't know what it is, they haven't sent it to us. There's a representative from the insurance agency at the Hartford we've been dealing with, and she doesn't return calls, and you can only call between eleven-thirty and two if you call outside of business hours, care of luck.
Those are business hours?
Does it have any idea how much that bill is?
I don't, I believe it's less than two thousand. It's not that much, it's just our deductible portion, and once we pay that, everything else is covered.
Can you tell us, say this is the end, not including any money, how much we have as surplus now for fiscal fourteen?
Well, I don't know how much will have in surplus, because I'm still waiting for some, I don't know if it's getting posted for the end of the year.
If, if we asked you right now where it stands, what would it be?
I can't, I have no idea. I don't.
When are we gonna have our books closed?
When will we have our books closed? I'm gonna try and do them and send everything in by end of September.
I was gonna say, if we have any money left over, it'd be nice to know sooner than later, so we can deal with it going forward, we have to wait till September. We should be able to get a fairly accurate picture, I would think.
Yeah, the school has some, the school, there's still need to be some receipts in there, I need to balance all my receivables with the, you know, with everybody else who has receivables, and the school still has to do some transfers to cover some of their negatives, whether it be in the general fund, things that they, they know they've encumbered, but they're gonna cover it from school choice, and they have some accounts in their school funding that are negative at this moment, that they're trying to balance out themselves.
And there's no, I mean, I'm just looking at, for the state, I mean, you get like a two or three week window where you have to close, and you have to know the revenues and the expenses for that year, close the books, anything else goes into the next year. So we, the school or whoever has a lot longer to figure that out, I would have thought in July sometimes we'd have a pretty solid number.
Well, I don't know about when in July, that depends on when people give me their information.
But don't we tell them that you gotta have it by a certain date?
Yeah, I, you, we do, as far as, you know, these types of issues, but then I get to go and balance everything after I get all this.
So everything is in, you need the time?
I need to...
Okay, so they can't just keep throwing it at you?
You know what, I sent the memo out, and I said, "If you didn't give me anything by today, and you don't have any money left in your mind, you need to go to town, you need to get money and pay for it for next year." I can't wait, like I did last year, it was August, and I'm still getting bills from, from last year, and I just can't.
That's kinda what I'm getting at, because if we're gonna have a disciplined budget process, we need to start now and say, "Okay, if you haven't submitted it by a certain date, then you have to go to town meeting, or you have to figure it out."
Well, that's what's gonna happen now, like, today was the deadline, and that's why we wrote in big, bold, in letters, in capitals, like, "If I don't get it today, you can't." You don't have enough money in the budget, which most of you, there's gonna be no money left in any of these budgets. I can't, you have to go to town meeting, I can't be keeping things.
So can you bring them to us, so we're aware of them? You know, if you get something tomorrow, then can you send us an email that says FYI, we just got this, yeah, so that we're aware of who it's coming from?
Or I forgot about this, I forgot about this.
Right.
And I'll use the royal "we" because it's us, we, we've been very lax in the past on a lot of things we do, so, that'll help you...
But if we know about it, it'll be helpful.
Get your numbers too.
Any other questions about these transfers? Who'd accept a motion to approve the transfers?
Make a motion to approve the transfer for number four?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're gonna do ours in two books, because I'm not gonna vote on anything related to the highway department, so.
I should, sorry, I didn't think that's gonna happen.
So I move a motion.
I move that the finance committee vote to approve the budget transfers for fiscal two thousand and fourteen as outlined by the town.
Excluding, excluding the highway.
Excluding the highway to...
I'll second.
All in.
I'm not even saying a motion.
I move that we approve the budget transfers for the highway department as outlined by the town.
Second.
All in favor. I...
Thank you very much, ladies. Ready to go on? Have you had a chance to look at the minutes yet?
Yep. Some of them.
I can skip ahead if you wanna keep looking at them? Okay. Did you look at the warrants yet?
Can I ask, ask a question?
Yes.
I'm just wondering, do we, if we're just getting this now, how do we, how do we look at these?
They were in our packets on your iPads.
Were?
I thought so.
Were they in there?
Yeah, they were in the categorical minutes, as I'll hand you my email.
So...
I don't know, I didn't see them.
So if you wanna peruse them in your...
Do you wanna wait till next time, or?
That's fine, we can put a lot, sure, no problem. So we're gonna move past the minutes.
Thanks.
Did you look, have a chance to look at the payroll warrant?
Yep.
So, I can't sign the one that's fifteen dash P dash O three.
Okay.
So if you guys can give me a motion on the first two, that would be helpful.
Okay, so I'll make a motion on warrant P fifteen dash three, payroll.
Oh, wait a minute.
The fifteen dash three only has...
Me.
No, it doesn't have you, fifteen dash, oh, fifteen, fifteen dash three, we're doing payroll a little differently now.
I'm looking at that.
And so, there's gonna be eventually, the report is gonna have a, there's a caveat there, a page on the back where it says, "We're not gonna split them out into payrolls, it's gonna be one payroll," where it's gonna say, you know, "You can sign, with the exception of school lunchroom."
And then we'll all sign it?
And then you sign, and then Jackie will, hers says she can't sign, calling the inspectors, she'll sign, and you guys can, they'll all sign to us.
So when we talked to the auditors last year, I'm sure what they said is you can make a motion to sign all the payrolls that are applicable, that you're able to sign.
That you're able to sign.
But can Jackie and I make a motion on either one of them?
Yeah, Jackie could say, I, I directly said, make a motion to sign, you know, that we approve all the motions and sign all those ones that we are able to sign.
So we don't have to go through them a gazillion times? Fair enough.
No, but now there's just gonna be one.
Okay, so if you wanna pass them down when you're done looking at them, I can tell you what I need, and we can go ahead and pass.
But there's two of them, because one is FY fourteen.
And one's FY fifteen.
But that's FY fourteen, there is only, you guys should be okay, because there's no plumbing and there's no...
So our first one is payroll deduction fifteen dash three in the amount of thirty-three thousand ten dollars and eighty-four cents.
Second.
I can't make a motion.
Ten dollars and eighty-four cents.
Just make a motion.
I'm just reading it.
I make a motion to approve fifteen PD dash O three for thirty-three thousand ten dollars and eighty-four cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ah, I see. Now I see it. So like, what else?
What we're, what our plan to do, I'm planning on getting, so we bought stickers, so they actually are on the physical...
So do we sign this and this?
No, just sign that.
Jackie and I don't sign?
Correct.
This, okay.
At this stage, what's gonna happen is there's gonna be a sticker on the bottom of that one, that you guys will all be able to sign.
Gosh, there's a lot of trouble going on here.
It was recommended by the...
That's, that's, that's fine. Maybe I should work in a different cafeteria. The same, okay. So, payroll warrant fifteen dash three in the amount of one hundred and eighty-two thousand seven hundred and eleven dollars and sixty-seven cents.
I make a motion to pay fifteen P dash three for one hundred and eighty-two thousand seven hundred and eleven dollars sixty-seven cents.
Is there a second?
That's the one you, that needs the little modifier to sign only the ones able to sign.
Oh, you're killing me here.
Okay, you modify that.
How about I just make the motion and I say it?
No, you can't.
No, I can. I, I make a motion to sign payroll fifteen dash three in the amount one hundred and eighty-two thousand seven hundred and eleven dollars and sixty-seven cents, except for me. Does that work?
No, because you still have Jackie, and if Jackie doesn't sign hers, then there's, you can't do it, we need a forum on either of them. There's pieces in both that you can't in this one, both of you can't sign, so if you make the motion to say, "I make a, I make a motion to approve, it's have each individual select person sign all of the, part of the payroll that applies to, that they're able to sign," that works. Because we need three people to approve it all.
So we can't do this tonight?
I make a motion...
No, you can do it. You can do this tonight, what you're saying is when you make a motion to sign, you're making a motion to sign the payroll and pay, and you're making a motion to sign all the ones that you're able to sign.
Okay, go ahead, try it.
I make a motion for payroll warrant fifteen PD dash O three for one hundred and eighty-two thousand seven hundred and eleven dollars sixty-seven cents for, what was it, for, I had that wrong, for all that are applicable.
Is that fine?
To sign everything that each individual can sign.
Okay, was there a second?
I don't know what the heck you said.
It just means that Jackie and I are only approving the ones that don't...
So you're not saying from your particular ones?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You guys have to vote.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
And I only sign here?
Yes.
Someone's gonna need to write that out and put it right here, so we know exactly what to say next.
Let me back up a second, because somebody said this was to make it easier, correct?
It will, it will, because instead of having to, you'll sign now, in the future, we're only gonna have one.
You sign right there, holy mackerel.
And they're all gonna be on that one paper.
Soon as I get some stickers with money.
We don't really have money for that, so you should just stick with...
I'll buy them myself, something, a spot sticker.
Nope, that, that's not for John. John can sign this one. Do you have more down there? I see more folders.
I think so.
Under his iPad.
Unless, well, I don't wanna have software change that paper, because if something happens, someone will have to reprogram it again, you know, in the report, so.
Just one, but I need the folder underneath you.
Yeah, two of them actually, one I signed already. Okay, you need a folder, this one here?
Okay, very soon, yeah, all right, so here's some stickers.
The blue folder underneath your iPad.
This one here?
Is that, that's...
I just get a little rough.
Don't sign that, Jackie.
Okay.
The other thing you'll notice is that we did it so that you can see each individual person and how much they got paid for that week.
That was gonna test us. It was a request of the auditors, we just then handled it personally.
Yeah. This is school stuff, what, did we not sign something, or are we all second?
Bill warrant.
John, you have the bill warrants to your left.
You don't have anything with this?
I have...
I don't think so.
I have, this is the highway department, I guess, in the police department.
That's included in one of the two marks, whichever one it is.
The warrant should be on the top left.
This one, I think, was part of, oh, I mean, no, no, I'm sorry.
I think I...
Fourteen table.
Fourteen fifty-five.
I think I like it the other way.
Fourteen fifty-five.
All right.
I have a question, it's probably, makes a lot of sense, but I, I'm looking at numbers that don't make sense, it's for the, happens to be the police department payroll, and it has numbers up here, it has a rate of, say, twenty-four, thirty-four, then the rate below are different, this says eighteen fifty-two, and it's eighteen ninety-seven.
Perhaps they're gonna pay different rates because they're working regular versus overtime?
No, no, right, right here, friend. Nope, nope, right, right here, for instance, you see a rate of twenty-three, eighteen. But this says twenty-three, eighty-three.
Because there's a shift differential from, because he worked four to twelve.
Okay, so that's what, isn't that the rate for shift differential? So that's the regular rate?
That's his regular rate.
That's shift, this is outside.
That's detail forty, yeah, and then this is whatever.
Sick day or whatever.
Sick day.
Whatever, yeah, sick day, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it's pretty convoluted.
My first time looking at these.
Do you want to just make the motion, Jackie? That would be helpful.
Um.
It's right here.
Where's, uh?
Got it, go ahead.
Okay, so this is. Move to sign motion fifteen fifty-five, so eleven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars and forty-nine cents.
Is there a second?
Fourteen fifty-five.
Oh, I'm sorry, fourteen fifty-five.
Thanks.
Well.
Is there a second?
I see.
Yes? All those in favor? Do you have anything else down there?
Yeah.
Of course.
Same as. Yep, just sign and give it back and I'll pass it on.
Warrant fifteen two. For a total of, what's that? Ten thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars and seventeen cents?
Right.
That's what you got there? Okay. I'll make a motion, we accept warrant, I lost it, oh, fifteen dash two.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
You can sign it and send it to Jackie. That, to the end of it? Can I skip ahead?
Yeah.
You don't care what I do here?
It's your meeting.
Thanks, I'm going to move ahead. I'm going to, as soon as these are signed, I'm going to skip ahead to our representative from Comcast, so we can send you along. You're welcome. Can you sign, you sign that.
We have one more here. You want me to sign?
That one's all set. Just give me one more second.
We have fourteen fifty-four.
Oh, there's more? Okay.
One more. Fourteen fifty-four.
How's procedures and sign that piece yet?
Yep, we know.
I know, I have a commentary for it.
Sign that and send it home.
After last week.
I'm ready.
I'll make a motion, we approve warrant fourteen dash fifty-four for one hundred and seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars and thirty-six cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Order of signature.
I could.
I know, but I didn't think you were like that.
No. Let's not make things anymore.
Yeah, don't even go there. I missed you.
Thanks.
Okay. I don't like that takes a few seconds. But you know what, it didn't come out.
Okay, so I'm going to move to action discussion item seven point three. Comcast is taking over charter and pending FCC approval, and we have a representative from Comcast to come explain to us what's happening and a chance for the board to ask any questions. So if you'd like to move up front, that would be helpful.
Should we put her in front of a microphone?
Oh, sure, that would be good too. Thanks so much. How are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm good, thank you. What's your name?
I'm sorry?
What's your name?
My name's Dan Glanville. I'm a seventeen-year employee of Comcast in the western New England region. Actually, a lifelong resident of Holyoke. So a short drive home.
Yep.
Happy to be here this evening to explain, you have a three ninety-four application in front of you. And the three ninety-four application is an application that explains a change of control. So, we're not taking over charter per se, what we are is we're swapping assets with charter. And part of the swap of assets will be the western Massachusetts assets, which include the town of Southampton and many of the other surrounding communities. Part of that process is going through the four criteria established. Three of those criteria are established under federal law and additional criteria is established under state law. And that would be the financial ability to step into the shoes, the managerial ability to step into the shoes, the technical ability to step into the shoes. Managerial, financial, technical, and it's escaping me, I don't have it in front of me this evening.
Financial.
Financial capability to step into the shoes. So those criteria are explained in the three ninety-four application that have been presented to you. Really, what it does is it goes through the, the financial ability outlining Comcast's financial capability to assume the assets of charter and the technical and ability as well. I think they're combined together, if you go through the financial assets and go through the technical capability of what it's done, not only through, across the country, but in the thirty-five communities that it serves up and down the ninety-one corridor of western Massachusetts, it speaks to the technical ability of Comcast. The managerial ability, I think, is directly stated, not only in the application, but specifically through the fact that Comcast has broken up into divisions and regions. This is the western New England region, which operates through the state of Vermont, western Massachusetts, the state of Connecticut, and a small portion of Putnam County, New York. It's operated out of its regional operations center in Berlin, Connecticut, a little bit south of Hartford. We have call centers in both Berlin, Connecticut, Burlington, Vermont, and Enfield, Connecticut, where my office is located. In addition to that, if you go through those aspects, you see, we believe that Comcast clearly meets the criteria to step into the shoes of, of charter and assume control of the operations. Comcast has a long history in operations of cable systems, actually dating back fifty-plus years, beginning in the small town of Mississippi and really expanding greatly from that. Actually, the chairman emeritus of Comcast, Ralph Roberts, is still associated with the company, founded the company fifty-plus years ago with the acquisition of that cable system, and has been acquiring cable systems to build Comcast into what it is today. Part of the process that's kind of outlined in the application, but can be explained by me here this evening, is the fact that Comcast also makes a great deal of investment, financial investment, into its technical architecture to assure that it can compete adequately in what is a highly competitive universe for video services, multiple opportunities to receive video service today, whether it be over direct broadcast satellite, people choosing to, over the top, through their television sets as well. Also, competitive, a highly competitive arena for high-speed internet and telephony services as well. So that, as well as the fact that the company firmly believes in local management and also believes in local employees giving back to the community. Comcast has a long history of being directly involved in the communities where their employees live and work. That's outlined as well in the three ninety-four application. And as I said, that we're divided up into, really, the corporate office, and then our division office is in Manchester, New Hampshire, for the northeast division. And the regional office that we associate with, as I said, is the western New England region. I'm happy to take any questions you may have. It's anticipated that we will go through this process and will receive and work on federal approval throughout the fall months and probably see a change of, closing of the transaction shortly after the beginning of calendar year two thousand and fifteen.
That was my question, what does this mean for the people in Southampton? Do they have to change, like, television boxes? Or does everything just switch over to them? There's nothing they need to do or?
So, there will be no change at the outset. There will be no change with regard to, so we would assume the assets and we would continue operations.
Just switches.
Just switches. There wouldn't even be a rebranding initially. Rebranding would take place shortly thereafter. So the transaction would close on a date to be determined shortly after the first of the year. After that, there would be a rebranding process that would take place, and during the rebranding, bills would change from Comcast, you would see trucks that would change and those types of things. We would then also, Comcast, as I said, has a long history of technological advancements, whether it be high-def offerings, whether it be the X one platform or other things. Those services would be introduced to customers gradually. But there would be no initial change, there would be no initial drastic change to customers. We believe that ultimately, customers have a lot of choice, as I said, with their television service, with their internet service and others. So, we like to make the change as seamless as possible and make additional opportunities available to them so that we continue to have a relationship with customers.
I had another question, so correct me if I'm wrong. We pay for these ECAT services now because charter pays into.
Pay. Uh, pay access.
Right.
Yes.
Does that, will that change when we switch to Comcast?
So I, I assume that's per your current franchise agreement? So we step in, as I said, step into the shoes, I use a lot of catchphrases, but we step into those shoes. We assume all the terms and conditions of the franchise agreement.
Okay.
So no changes with regard to that.
With that being said, I think the contract is five years, over a five-year duration?
So it's a five remaining year, sir?
I, I think we have a five-year agreement with charter.
Okay.
I think we have three years left on that agreement.
Okay.
Off by a year, so you don't anticipate any changes at all in that agreement?
No, not till expiration, but I will say this, no changes, but contracts begin to be renewed in what's called a three-year ascertainment window. So as soon as you're thirty-six months out from expiration, we would begin the process of discussing with your cable advisory board renewal.
So if I'm not mistaken, I think we're opening that time now.
Well, a question on that, since Comcast is taking a physical area, charter's taking a physical area rather than here and there. When our contract ends, are there options for us if we don't want to stay with Comcast?
Well, Massachusetts is what they call presumptive renewal state, so as long as you've significantly complied the terms and conditions of the existing franchise agreement, then there is the opportunity for approval and renewal. Having said that, Massachusetts and most jurisdictions across the country are also non-exclusive franchises. So there is always the opportunity to grant more franchise agreements. So Comcast or Charter is not the only franchise holder in a particular community. In fact, in many communities where we operate across the country, there are multiple franchise holders.
Who else around here?
I'm sorry, sir?
What are the franchise owners around here? What do we look to?
I can't really, I can't offer that, so.
Now, is Comcast, are you looking at merging with Time Warner or some kind of merger with Time Warner?
We are acquiring the assets of Time Warner. Yes.
So that's one less competitor out there, so to speak?
Well, I, I would say that we don't compete directly with Time Warner or directly with Charter. So there isn't competition per se, but I will say that competition in the last decade with regard to DBS, direct broadcast satellite, has greatly increased, making them one of the largest providers of video opportunities to customers. So we compete very, very, we think effectively with those providers, but we compete every single day with them. Telephone companies such as Verizon and AT&amp;T are actively involved in this market as well. We compete with them across our marketplaces. In addition, whether it be Netflix or other over-the-top providers providing video opportunities for customers, we compete with them on a regular basis with all of our customers.
Doesn't say much competition out there at all. Now, for instance, and I guess one thing that hurts me with, with Charter is they're, in eighteen, do you know, they advertise these specials, the triple play for Charter, for instance, but only if you're a new customer. And, you know, hundred dollars a new customer, hundred seventy-five if you're an existing customer. Is that how Comcast works too? The existing customer doesn't get the benefit of the new improved plans out there?
We have promotional offers for both new and existing customers. So there are promotional offers for new customers, but there are also promotional offer, promotional offers for existing customers who may change their services or those types of options.
I guess what I'm asking, if I'm a customer that has all three, internet, phone, and cable, and you offer a much better deal to new customers, can I avail myself of that? Or I'm stuck in my two or three year agreement? That's what Charter does now, I mean. AT&amp;T does it too, you know, it's like, the new, the new customers get the benefit where the existing customers don't. So how does Comcast deal with that?
We have promotional offers for new customers as well, sir. But we also have promotional offers for existing customers who may change their plans and avail themselves of those offers.
So let me rephrase it, if I have three plans and you offer a new customer for the same exact plan have to cost, could I avail myself or I'm stuck in that because I'm not changing services?
I think you're telling me you're not a new customer.
Correct, existing customer, internet, cable, and whatever I have, I have. Then to attract new customers, Comcast says, "We'll give you that same exact package for about half the price."
For promotional period, that's correct, for new customers.
As an existing customer, I couldn't get that promotional price for that two-year promotional period.
Well, the purpose of my visit here isn't certainly to debate, but I would presume you aren't a new customer, so you could not avail yourself of that opportunity.
Okay, that's exactly what I want to know, so these, the existing customers get stuck, they don't get the new plans, and it's not just you. It's, you know, that's what always hurts me, you know? It's, it's a captive market. Okay.
Go ahead, Jackie.
I'm just curious about your customer service.
Yes.
Because, you know, I have a really hard time getting a hold of a rep from Charter. Can you tell me a little bit about your customer service?
Sure, Comcast provides itself on what we believe is very good customer service. We operate a three to four hundred seat call center in Enfield, Connecticut. We also operate a call center and dispatch center in Berlin, Connecticut. We operate a ninety-seat call center in Burlington, Vermont. We utilize those call centers as long as, as well as a good deal of call, call centers in eastern Massachusetts. That said, during times of peak use, we also use third-party call centers to assist us. But we believe that we provide quality customer service with both our existing in-house centers as well as our third-party call centers. And are particularly proud with, of the enhancements we've made in customer service. In addition to that, we've greatly enhanced our technical opportunities to reduce call, call service windows, to introduce the two-hour window, so that customers have to perhaps take less time off or wait at their home for a less period of time for a technician visit. And also have the opportunity to utilize internet and self-service options so the customers can actively see when a particular opportunity is available for them, for a trouble call or any, any type of activity there. So we also, we work every year, we believe, to enhance the customer service aspects, whether it be dealing, giving our, giving our call centers additional tools so that they can utilize, utilize more effectively the particular, particular pieces of our business. So it's a big business, it is voice, video, and data, as I said, and there's a lot for an individual to know. Through a lot of the tools that we make available to our customers on their desktop and training that we have in-house, in, in Enfield and Berlin, Connecticut, we try to, and Burlington, Vermont, try to enhance our employees' knowledge so that they can better serve customers more effectively for a positive experience.
Okay, so what are your hours, like, during the week or?
The call center is available twenty-four seven.
Oh, nice.
Your third-party outsourcing, is that domestic or is that foreign?
Both domestic and foreign, sir.
So it's twenty-four seven, seven days a week?
Yes, sir.
I just have one other question. Is the cost of Comcast significantly higher, lower, or the same as Charter?
I have done, not done a comparison, I will say this, that we offer a good deal of packages that are, that suit all customers' needs, whether it be a basic video package, we have an internet essentials for those of student age who qualify for free and reduced student lunch, where they can get nine, nine dollars and ninety-five cent internet service available to them. We have many, many packages, whether it be economy packages of video, and people who choose to go on high-end packages of video. So we believe that there are many packages available to serve many different types of people's interests as well as opportunity to pay.
Last question, so if you take over January fifteenth for a date, and we're on a plan, I'm on a plan for Charter, and you offer a better plan being Comcast, will there be an opportunity to switch from the Charter plans to the Comcast? Or do you have to go the full term of whatever you agree to with Charter?
We will eventually grandfather probably existing plans. So if people want to stay in their existing package, we would grandfather for a period of time. And traditionally, when you grandfather, you grandfather for a six-month period and then you proactively reach out to the customer for available options that are available to them. So I can't tell you definitively when that will happen, but ultimately, you will transition to, have the opportunity to transition to a Comcast plan.
But if you grandfather for a short period, we're going to have to change within a short period of time to a Comcast plan, whatever that may be. You're not going to let us go for years on Charter.
I've seen grandfather plans in some instances that do continue for a period of time. Traditionally and generally, both the regulators and the company likes to see grandfather plans be no longer than a six-month period.
So, I just wanted, so regarding service.
Yes.
If you're going to have the same people that are providing service to Charter now, or do you add any additional servicemen, trucks out, and equipment?
So we would evaluate that as we take over during a due diligence period, and we would see what makes sense. would see what makes sense. We have different methodologies of dispatch, of how we dispatch our trucks and the like, so, and that'll be part of an integration plan. We'll look at what makes the best sense. We don't see any opportunity for certainly a reduction in service employees, but we'll evaluate what needs to be done post-close to determine that.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I just have one more, too. I just remember when people called to complain about how long it took to get a new service put in. And I know we have to go over the contract and see what that entails with your company, but it just seemed like it took a really long time and it cost them a lot of money because a lot of the homes are, a lot of them are really far out and there's, you know, I don't know what you charge for square footage to bring in the wire, you know?
So if there's existing wire, do you mean a street that's already wired and long driveways?
A new street, you know, and if they're really far back, I mean, is it...
Really far back from the road. The standard driveway drop, according to Massachusetts regulation, is one hundred and twenty-five feet. Anything above that has a cost associated with it. So we would absorb the cost of one hundred and twenty-five, and we usually probably absorb, on average, between one hundred and fifty and two hundred feet to get to the average drop. So it's a little more than is required under Mass law. But also, in addition to that, for line extensions, we adhere to the franchise agreement, but we will also, I think the average in the country today is about twenty-five homes aerial per mile, and I think it goes forty or fifty for underground. And I don't have the parameters of the Charter franchise in front of me to speak to them, but we would look at that and we would evaluate every particular area that needs to be expanded. I'll say this, that we want to grow our customer base. We want to grow our customer base effectively as well. So while we wouldn't build something to eight homes pass per mile, we may look at something that may not be to the twenty-five homes pass per mile, to see if it gives us an opportunity to build customers and be able to sell services. That said, sometimes, I'm a New Englander, a lifelong one, if you're building a particular area during the winter months and requires underground excavation, just simply can't be done, and so some people might be frustrated with the time it takes. We do sometimes put in temporary drops, but they have burdens with them as well. But for the most part, during this time of year, we budget, we're in the budget cycle right now for next year, we budget for our line extensions during this cycle. As soon as the thaw makes it available to us, we begin to build out of those particular areas for the additional offering of services.
In regards to what you just said about new construction?
Yes, sir.
We had a lot of problems with Charter, getting them out of their Worcester offices up here because there's two different offices for construction of subdivisions and lines. Where is your construction office?
I can tell you, the head of our construction lives in West Springfield, works in Berlin and Westfield.
We've had an awful lot of, I supervise many of the constructions of subdivisions in this town for the last thirty years, and one of our biggest problems was to get, whether it was Greater Media or Charter, to coordinate their efforts with us on a tiny basis. Usually, holding up the project is Charter.
So, I can speak from experience that, and I would invite you to talk to other communities in the area that we've done service with, whether, that have had Continental Cable, AT&amp;T Broadband, Media One, and the like, then I think most of them would tell you that we have a very positive working relationship with their engineering departments, their boards of public works, to get things done and work effectively, to be sure that we meet their construction needs and also coordinate well. I will say this, that for the most part, in seventeen years, while I may have seen some complaints, for the most part, I have been told that our ability for make-ready and complying with other providers on the pole, we are right there, ready, and waiting when the work needs to be done. That said, there may be the instance here and there where you can prove me wrong. I hope that is not the case, but I've worked closely with our construction department for the majority of my career, and I think we have a very good team here in western Massachusetts.
Are there any other questions from the board? Do you have any other questions for us?
I don't.
When do you have to have this thing signed?
So we have a thirty, sixty, ninety day line, timeline they're on. Thirty days was first to ask questions on this application, sixty days is first to have a public hearing, and ninety days is first to make a decision to accept or deny.
We have to have the public hearing or...?
We have to have a public hearing as is required by CMRs, as I spoke with someone from the state last week. So we have until August.
Let me ask this question. If we're going to have the public hearing, we're not in a position to answer these questions?
No, we advertise the public hearing and...
Okay.
Dan and one of his representatives, as well as someone from Charter, usually attend.
Yeah, probably me and Tom will be here, Tom Cohen.
So we host the public meeting, how's that?
That's better.
Heather, what was the ninety day? It was thirty, sixty, ninety, what was the ninety day?
Ninety is to accept or deny the application.
Oh, okay.
It says a hundred and twenty in here, I believe. It says following hearing but within twenty days of receipt date. Each issuing authority must determine the appropriateness of the transfer.
We talked at the state, it's thirty, sixty, ninety.
Oh, this is what you sent us, that's all?
Oh, maybe I created my own date. Sometimes it happens.
It's citing the...
The two versus the three when I'm typing on the small little...
You're correct. Thirty for questions regarding the accuracy of the application, then the hearing, and it's usually one-twenty from receipt to have action.
Well, they gave me ninety when I called the state.
Okay.
This is citing the CMR's and the... Okay, so that gives us more time now, which is good.
All right, well, if there's no more questions, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you, and I'll wait to hear regarding when the hearing will take place.
Yes.
I am out as of Friday until the following Wednesday.
I don't think it'll be that fast.
Won't be that fast.
Won't go that fast.
Yeah, well, a week from the following Wednesday. I think the thirtieth I'll be back.
Okay.
So if we did some time in August, we should be good.
No problem. They are filling up, though, so let me know.
Okay, we'll do it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Have a good day.
You too. I'm skipping ahead, just for the record. We're going to move on to action item seven point four. Thomas Quinlan is here to talk about the Building Commissioner's Zoning Enforcement Officer position. And so Mr. Quinlan can be appointed as a conditional local inspector under an interim building commissioner and zoning enforcement officer until such time that he passes all his exams and becomes certified. The state regulations allow twelve months for passage of the exam, so I think we had previously said, you know, by course Smith or something, but the state regulations allow for twelve months with three possible granting of six-month extensions, so another eighteen months, is that right? Three, six months?
But the initial time is twelve months.
Right.
We talked to Kim Spencer yesterday.
So, I'm going to go with this.
Oh, so essentially, the point of tonight's meeting was to discuss what we're doing, where we're going, and where we're going from there. At the last meeting, the board had voted to offer Tom the job. We, Tom and I had spoke pre, or after that point, we had discussed essentially that, you know, the board had brought up the amount of the position before, we had discussed, you know, that it would be, it has to be a conditional appointment based on the state's regulations, that he would have to work under someone else who is currently licensed as a building commissioner, that the board would likely need to be able to have a stipend to pay the building commissioner, so the rate of pay right now would have to be less than what he would normally get because we have to share the pay between two people. You know, as a stipend, it's less than that. We still have to get the specifications precisely spelled out for us from the state, just exactly what the building commissioner needs to have a hand in, like to sign off on the building occupancy permits. The building commissioner himself has to sign, so whoever the acting or interim building commissioner is, he would have to sign. We have a few people who are potentials to be an interim for that, and that's up to the board. One person is a gentleman who was recommended by Paul Healy. I do not have his name on top of my head, but I forward the information to the board. I have his resume and the like. The other gentleman is someone who you currently work under now, Tom.
I don't have a chance to understand him.
Yes. And there's also a phone number I have for a gentleman who is the president of the, I want to say, the Western Mass Building Inspectors, Commissioners, something or another on this end of the world. He has contacts for all the retirees, so we also have that as a third resource. The idea would be to get Tom in as soon as possible, probably August first, so we can get him going. Paul said he would be able to come back and help out whenever possible. As a board ass, I also researched with the Mass, I don't know what it's called, I'm sorry, the MPAA, was served, and I actually did get sample contracts from other communities. Some communities have them, some communities don't have them. But as I was talking to Kim Spencer yesterday, she didn't know of any restrictions of the state that would restrict having a contract with the building commissioner.
So to move forward with this, go ahead.
It's a two-part system. We, before we can appoint anybody, we need to know who the overseer is going to be, and we need to have him, what his agreement is, and what's that going to cost, and then we can...
And then we can appoint.
Then we can appoint.
So we have to do the...
What if you appointed him with the overseer to be determined at the next meeting? Because we can make that agreement on the side, essentially.
Okay.
And do the same thing with the salary, so make it so that he starts, because he asked a good notice, so make it so that he would start with August first as a starting date, with the salary to be further discussed, but essentially...
Could I ask the board to have Heather interview these three potential people and give us a recommendation on whether she's tampering or that? And then, I have no problem with appointing Mr. Quinlan now, but we can't agree to a stipend yet.
Without speaking with them?
Before we go too far, I've got a whole different question and a different side I want to discuss, too. Because, nothing against Mr. Quinlan, but I think we should consider what the Hoyok Building Inspector's Office has presented to us before we go ahead and do any permanent presentation. So I'd like to discuss that, too. I'd be glad to start it, or you want to, it's up to you. There's a lot of pros to something like that, and I think we need to discuss it and put it out, put it out there. Can we do that?
Yes.
Okay.
I have not seen that.
Right, and, I'm sorry, nothing against you personally, but we got a proposal from the Hoyok Building Inspector's Department to subcontract the position out to us on a twenty-fourth, twenty-eight, thirty-hour position, and when you compare what you're going to get, you're going to get fifty-two weeks a year coverage. If the person's on vacation, person's out sick, the person's, for whatever reason, we will have a person during those times, so we will have a hundred percent coverage for an amount that will save us roughly twenty thousand dollars a year or so, and it will, they'll also have the connection to the Hoyok Building Inspector's Department, where if there's a question, they could call up the head of the building inspector. So we're saving money, we got a hundred percent coverage, because this position is fifty thousand dollars, let's say, then you pay all the benefits, so you're up to seventy, seventy-five thousand, and then you've got to pay somebody to cover four weeks vacation, got to cover five or six personal days, you've got to cover six days, sick days, so there's an extra six to seven weeks that we have to pay somebody for. So you add all that up, and you're minimum of twenty thousand dollars savings a year. And if we've got a six hundred thousand dollar deficit we have to make up, I sure can't in good conscience hire, give away twenty thousand dollars in savings, then go down to the police chief and say, oh, by the way, you've got to cut twenty thousand or thirty thousand dollars from your budget, because he will rightfully come right to us and say, you had the opportunity to save twenty grand with just setting up a new system. We've got to have a little vision here, I think.
I didn't see that memo, but I know that, you told me last week that you received one, and my biggest concern is about the building inspector. I think Hoyok, it sounded like Hoyok would take care of the building inspectors out of it, but what about the zoning enforcement side of it?
Well, they said they would do both, they're open to everything, and they gave us some estimates of cost, depending on how many hours, but I mean, and again, I'm not saying do that, I'm saying I think we should postpone this and look into it, because how can we start filling positions and then tell people that they've got to cut their budgets? Just doesn't make sense to me. Twenty grands a half a position.
I'll look at anything that's going to save us money. I have no problem with that.
Without compromising services that we, to a degree, we're going to compromise services everywhere we go, let's face it.
I just want to make sure that we're getting, we're getting the zoning enforcement...
Yep.
We're getting the building inspector.
Yep.
Does that put somebody in our office?
Yep.
In the morning?
In our office. For instance...
Every day?
Well, depends what we want. We can scope it, and this is a perfect opportunity to look at, do we need somebody in the office four days or five days a week? Let's face it, we're going to cut services all over the place because of this budget deficit. So if we had a building inspector and enforcement officer in three days a week, let's say, eight hours a day, is that enough? I don't know. That's something we'd have to decide, but it's an opportunity to save a good chunk of money, and I think we can't pass it by because the next person we go to is going to say, you gave that money away to this department, I want the same. And, you know, we've operated like that for the last, how many years? And we're a different group, but, you know, we need to... I'm really keying on, this was the largest election we ever had minus a state, you know, or national election, and two to one, they said, don't spend the money. I mean, there's, to me, there's no better way to tell us what they want done, you know? It may differ from our views, but, you know, we're four people that got to do what we're elected to do.
When you spoke with Hoyok Heather, did they indicate how many days a week that they would have somebody in the office, or is this all...
I'm trying to find...
Yeah, she sent it around to all of us, the proposal.
I did. It was twenty-four hours.
I think it also said up to thirty-two. I think he gave two proposals, if I'm not mistaken, but he said this is just a suggestion, we're open to talking.
I have more information on regionalization later on in the agenda pertaining to other stuff.
Yeah, and again, if we're looking at regionalization for something else, how do we bypass an opportunity?
Well, we should investigate it at the minimum.
I agree. I'm not saying it's the best way to go, it's just an opportunity that we should look at, again.
So how does the board want to move forward here?
I'd make a motion that we postpone an appointment until we have time to investigate.
Well, how much time do we, you want?
We can, you know, two or three weeks, I would think, would be plenty to figure this out. We need to get the Hoyok folks in here, talk to them.
Well, I would say, while we have this gentleman here, why do you think we'd be better off having a full-time building inspector rather than a regional? I mean, what could you do that, what could you do more? I hate to put you on the spot, I'm sorry, but you, you work in this business, you know what it's like. How would, if we had somebody that came in here twenty-four, thirty-two, thirty-two hours a week, whatever, what might they do that would adversely affect the citizens of this town?
The early hours you have are great for, especially contractors, and then of course you've got the nights, you know, February, the Tuesday hours kind of suggested, but even like to, you know, every Tuesday, just so people aren't confused, you know, which Tuesday of the month it was, and finding, if I had to, you know, sit in town, working with, there's inspectors every day, and, you know, you're in the office in the morning, you plan on, you know, what would accommodate the homeowner, the contractor, to do, you know, some inspections every day. And some days, there's mainly be, you know, two, other days, there's fifteen of them. And people, what I see, not only contractors homeowners, you know, they lunch at their homes every day, the, I know, these tampering, being close on Friday, that gets here is tough.
Yeah.
And rebuilds, you know, they're open five days, which means it's a lot easier when somebody wants to move on, insulate, homeowner wants to do the installation, the weekend, and you can't get a proper inspection and have to wait. I mean, that's, that's one big benefit for the people.
Right, that you would be here, you'd be available a lot more than another...
Correct.
Yeah.
I was going to say, it's kind of unfair to ask questions of a person like that, but we're going to have to ask the same question if we have to lay a policeman off that's sitting here.
Yeah, right, well, I'm just saying, I wanted to get his opinion, because it's out in field, you know, rather than us kind of not being out there, you know, in the trenches and knowing like how people are affected, and because I don't, I want people to have their services, they're paying their taxes, they should...
But the problem is going to be, we're going to cut services everywhere.
I know, but when it comes to your home, you should have the very best. You know, I mean, people should...
We should have full police department, full fire department, full highway department, but we know we're not going to, right?
But they do have their services there, and if people call, if some of the police and fire department are there in no time, and if this is a situation where we can't get a investig, you know, enforcer, or, you know, somebody to come and look at what they need at that time, then, you know, I hate to have them waiting too long.
The other side is you'll... The other side is you'll have the Hoyok department as backup, 24/7.
Right. Exactly.
So it's, I'm looking at it from a strictly financial point of view without decreasing the services much. I know it puts you on the spot, and I apologize for that, but.
John, a couple of years ago, I think we talked with Hampshire Regional Cooperative, and they were offering a building service.
Yep.
But they were in no enforcement.
Yep.
It was a strictly, and they would come to town when they got permits to process.
Yep.
You know, so that was.
That would work, yeah.
But this one here, I'm just trying to figure out what they're, I haven't seen the plan they're offering.
Yep.
I'd like to see it, I think we owe it to everybody to look at that and make a determination on that. But I don't wanna hold up Mr. Quinlan long, and I don't wanna lose as an asset that is a potential asset here.
Yep.
I'd like to put this on a fast track and do it within, if we, within two weeks. Three weeks is a fair amount.
Yeah, I think if we can ask Heather to bring him in, or a subset of the board, whatever, talk about.
She was just showing me some numbers, the numbers that we got from Hoyok. And so they break things out a little differently than we do. So I think if we're gonna research it, we need to do it quickly.
Yep, I agree, I agree.
Mr. Lumbrue, John is the city treasurer in Hoyok. He will actually be present at the next meeting on the 29th for something else that we'll get into running in with my regionalization piece.
He's the treasurer?
He's the city treasurer, yes.
Okay.
He's the one responsible for putting numbers together at Hoyok. But he'll be present on the 29th for something else that I'll discuss in a little bit. When we initially talked about this, I had said, you know, the board had already decided, you know, to go a different direction, thanks for sending the information, and we started talking about other things.
Yep. Yeah, 'cause I think every opportunity that comes up, we need to look at it.
So there's a motion on the floor to?
Postpone a permanent appointment to allow us a couple of weeks to investigate the offer made by the Hoyok Building Commissioner, or whatever it is.
Do we wanna put a timeframe on that motion?
Yeah, we have, we can't leave it out there too long.
We do it two weeks.
But you know what, we don't meet every week.
Next week is July 29th.
We are meeting?
Our next meeting.
Okay, so we are meeting. But I'm saying that if there is an opportunity to meet with these people to crunch numbers, I mean, if I have to, I'll go and maybe one other selectman to see them.
I'm fine with that.
Well, we already have the numbers, Ed.
You do?
Yeah, we have.
Well, the questions I have would be, well, what kind of numbers are you gonna do for enforcement? What kind of numbers are you gonna do for inspections?
He's not dividing it up for us, he's just saying, this position will be available for us, so any work that we have in that office, this is what they're gonna do. The concern that may come out is the fact that, you know, if it's anything else, you're asking the person to be cross-trained. So you're saying, can the person know the building?
I'm not asking for, we've always had the person cross-trained. We're not looking for anything different.
No, 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 I'm saying, the person who works part-time in Hoyok and part-time over here, you're asking the person to be cross-trained. You're asking them to do zoning enforcement here and zoning enforcement there. Even when we have villains here who are alternates, Paul Neely, he's not well-versed in our zoning. He picks up the book and he tries to catch on what he can, but every, I try to explain to people, it's kinda like if you go to a foreign country, and even though you're speaking Spanish, you're speaking a different dialect when you go from town to town to town to town, because everyone's zoning violas are completely different.
I got you. I just, I just don't wanna lose that level of service that we have. Enforcement is very important at this point in time.
It's huge, and we're already losing.
And I don't wanna find out it's done, you know, just enough to appease us. We need to have somebody out there in a very active role, be proactive, and making sure that enforcement, the people who are violating our building codes are taken care of.
And I would think if we go along with somebody on the outside, we would have the opportunity to interview the person they're gonna put here. Make sure we're happy with the person. Yeah, definitely.
So if you could just amend your motion to put a timeframe on there, then we could.
Investigate it within the next two weeks and come back to the board with a recommendation two weeks away.
Is there a second?
Second.
Do we have another discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, but.
I'm sorry. I appreciate you coming in, thank you so much.
Just be patient with us. We have to exercise our rights and.
I would be out of town the 20th, the 3rd.
Heather knows how to go here.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Thank you for coming in.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hi, Tom.
All right, so we've done this, we've done this. We have a PCF for the animal inspector, an emergency position. Her name is Carapies. There was an incident last week where the Board of Health needed an individual who had a rabies vaccination to assist during the duration of the project that was involved with the removal of the cats. This appointment was for the duration of that task only. So it hasn't been to the PQB yet, but it has been to the Finance Committee, it's coming to us, and this already happened.
And the PQB was supposed to have a meeting, except by I, last Thursday, which postponed.
Right.
We're the last ones to sign those. I mean, I don't know how many times I've said that, but I don't wanna sign it until the Policy and Procedures Board signed it, that they, the policies for emergencies, they can go and do that without a PCF, because it's a two or three-day period. Other than that, we need to have everybody sign off before us. That's my feeling.
Now, it says a 3,000 annual stipend, which I know is in the budget. On somebody temporary, how do we place somebody on a stipend?
Does it look and see if it spells it out for it on the emergency one, but does it spell out exactly how much? I think we said, is it $50 per day, or $50 per week or something? I believe it's on one of them. We had initially come up with it.
3,000 annually?
It doesn't say anything about per day.
That was the second form unfortunately.
Yeah, I don't see either, on either of them, but you guys will work that out, I'm sure.
Yeah, I think we essentially came up, when we did the calculation, by 52 weeks, it was like $50 per week.
So the second PCF is, all right, let's steal this emergency one first. Is there a motion to sign or not sign?
I don't think a motion not to sign it until Hall, as soon as he's around.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. FYI, the PQB meets on Thursday, so you'll probably see that coming up. The second PCF is for the same position, the animal inspector, and this is a temporary appoint, a temporary, oh, wait a minute.
Yeah, temporary.
Temporary, yeah. Well, it says resignation.
No, it's resignation. It is placed soon.
There you go.
But her name, temporary appointment. Well, no matter what this says, the PQB didn't sign it yet, so I would take a motion to sign or not sign until the PQB has seen it.
Make a motion that PCF, Policy and Procedures Board sign that paper before we sign it.
Just please note on that, the date on that is for tomorrow, is the original.
Well, we can't, we can't jockey these things around. We shouldn't be jockeying around.
There's a motion not to sign, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. When they had originally filled out the paperwork, we had lined it up so it would, the dates would work with the time that things had gone.
But here's the thing, things are being done in the right order, so there really shouldn't be a problem when it comes down to it in the end.
We tried.
We have a one-day liquor license that happened on.
How did it stay?
If you want it, you can have it.
Does it say 7/19 on it?
No, it says July 19th.
For during, for during park hours at Conant Park. Where's that license? You signed it already. Ed came in and signed it. This is different?
Yeah, this is Dennis, right?
Oh. I thought we were talking about the phone.
Yeah, July 19th.
Sorry. We have a one-day liquor license for Wednesday, July 19th, for during park hours at Conant Park for Dennis Scribner. Wine and malt beverages only. It looks like everything is here. Do we wanna take a look? What's today?
It's the 15th.
15th.
15th, right?
Yeah.
Doesn't that make the 19th Saturday? I'm only confused because it says Wednesday on my paper.
Does it really?
Yeah, and that's why I was looking, it says Wednesday, July 19th, and I was so confused.
That's great, I'm firing myself on writing the agenda.
That says July 19th on there?
We would've put it already.
Saturday?
We overruled you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to sign the one-day liquor license?
Make a motion to sign the one-day liquor license for July 19th, Dennis Scribner.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I have a question on these in general. So what happens if there is an issue where somebody has a beer and wine and they bring in hard alcohol? Does somebody, do the police officers go over once in a while to check it out, or is it just if there's a problem?
Imagine if there's a problem. I'm not saying the police department, the police department does show up there occasionally.
But otherwise, long as it's quiet enjoyment, okay.
Right, and then this is our disclaimer.
They do go over there and make sure you're out of there in dusk, you moron.
Yeah, okay.
We have no other contracts. We have the fiscal 14 engagement letter for the annual audit from Willianson and Heath. This is our annual engagement letter for our annual audit.
Now, do we need a motion to accept it? I read it and I'm fine with it. Is that all you wanted, Heather? Is motion to accept it?
Motion to sign.
Motion to sign.
I'll make a motion to sign.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Just me here, Heather?
I'm not sure what it says.
It says name, title, date, acknowledge and agreed on behalf of the Town of Southampton. Then we have the Conservation Commission's License Agreement Renewal between the town and Mr. Robert Fletcher regarding 22 Gun Road. This is a renewal of a previously existing agreement for the property on 22 Gun Road.
This is a renewal?
Where's 22 Gun Road?
On Gun Road.
In relation to the farm, like when you drive down, there's the corn and the cows and the barn and then the field and the.
I think it's a field.
Zipca's, Zipca's farm is not on Gun Road, it's on Glendale Road.
I have no idea what the standard is, is it Gun Road or Glendale Road?
Glendale Road.
I said it down.
So this is wrong on here.
I'm no longer writing the agenda.
No, it's also down here, as you, oh, they have an address. Fletcher's live at 22 Gun Road.
Okay, so now I know where that is, but this is for the Zipca Conservation area on Glendale Road.
Yeah, so west of College Highway, north of Glendale. I've got a couple of questions when we get, when you're ready for them.
I'll get anything for this?
We get a dollar fifty an acre.
What?
We get a dollar fifty an acre. And I gotta tell ya, I do licenses for farmland up where I am, and we need to get more money, especially with our budget.
That's why I'm here.
Oh, all right.
Every opportunity, we need to look at, I think. I've got another question on this, and.
It's what?
Water Commissioner's.
So let's talk about it. We get a dollar fifty per acre, how many acres are there?
100 and, I know hay sells for about four bucks a bale right now. I don't know how many hundreds and hundreds of bales you get off this place, but it also allows it to hay it and also graze cattle.
Parcel, 35.
I'm not aware of, have we seen cattle over there?
Well, but this, this. This is a license to let them do that, though.
83, I'm just looking at the number of acres. Four, eight, three, 104 acres? What's that times a dollar fifty?
Well, it says a dollar fifty for 100 acres, $150 down below, so they're saying it's about 100 acres.
Well, there was another farmer from Westfield that used a very low portion of the river, and that was another agreement, and that was for grazing his heifers.
Yep.
But this area here, Fletcher's had, I don't know if they're combining both of them as one, so I don't know.
It was two parcels.
That land is Water Department property, so I don't know if we should even sign this yet until the Water Commissioner's head come in on this.
Do they have to meet and sign on this first?
They have, I'm just saying that I think we should be the last ones to sign off.
When do they meet?
Tomorrow. I don't know if this is on the agenda, but I know they have a meeting tomorrow.
When does this have to be signed by?
Uh, January of 2014.
So we're not gonna be any later.
Yeah.
Well, let me ask you a question. Where, who gets the money?
Yeah, where's the money go?
I know it's not a lot of money, maybe $200, where's it go?
Well, I don't get it, but I can.
I know.
I can ask Vicki, we're not sure. We can investigate it tomorrow.
All right, so where's the money come from? Needs to go to the Water Commissioners. What would you like to talk about?
And John thinks it's pretty low.
I know, I'm dying to see what you have to say about this.
She doesn't have anything on the.
Oh, I thought that's why you were here.
Just general subject, sorry.
Oh. Oh, I thought you wanted to talk about this in particular.
Just to go along with John said, I do think that we should find out what people are getting for land around here, probably a dollar fifty for cutting hay is a good deal.
And I also have another concern on here, because it's a license, so it's not like a lease, and a license is a entirely different vehicle, but it gives them, subject to conservation and, what is it, Water Commission, they're right to build something on there if they want it.
They can't. It's all protected for watershed protection.
Okay, so.
All that was bought with state money, land acquisition.
So it says they can do it if it gets approved by the building inspector and the Conservation Commission, so they would turn it down?
Exactly, they have to turn it down.
Okay, so that would be our, okay. Because they can't do it under the license, but if we have something in place, okay.
So we wanna send this back, we don't wanna sign it, we wanna talk about how much we get per acre, and we wanna wait for the Water Commissioners.
Is this landlocked?
No, it's all frontage on Glendale Road.
So technically, I don't know, 30B.
It's all frontage on Glendale Road, it busts the well, it was purchased to protect the water going into the well.
So under 30B, should we have to do a competitive bid to lease this or license it up?
We don't wanna violate that.
Can you find that out also?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sending this back. Are there any other questions we'd like to find out the answers to about this? We have a warrant for the state primary. This is state primary on September ninth.
May I just read that out?
The whole thing?
Yeah.
"To the constables of the town of Southampton, in the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town, who are qualified to vote in primaries, to vote at the town hall at two-ten College Highway, Southampton, Mass. On Tuesday, the ninth of September two thousand fourteen, from seven AM to eight PM for the following purpose, to cast their votes in the state primaries for the candidates of political parties for the following offices, Senator in Congress, Governor, Lieutenant Governor, Attorney General, Secretary of State, Treasurer and Receiver General, Auditor, Representative in Congress, Counselor, Senator in General Court, Representative in General Court, District Attorney, Register of Probate. Hereof fail not and make return of this warrant with your doings thereon at the time and place of said voting, given under our hands this fifteenth day of July two thousand and fourteen." Is there a motion to sign the warrant?
Make a motion to sign the warrant for state primary.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This says Liz. Does it need to say Elizabeth?
I didn't write it.
So I shouldn't change it?
No.
Should I just sign it that way? Somebody should call the governor's office. When I'm the governor, I'll make sure I change it.
If you want, sign it, just write underneath Liz and just write Elizabeth and then just-
Is this after you go on TV or before?
I'd probably be the governor before I go on TV.
Just a note for those at home, on the election, the last day of registered to vote is always twenty days before. Last day to get absentee ballot is the day, noon time before the election. And you can always apply for an absentee ballot if you're gonna be away for the election by mail, coming in in person, or by sending something by fax or email. That is after you're registered to vote. The only ones who are eligible to register, or the only ones eligible to vote in the primary are Democrat, Republican, or unenrolled, also known as independent. And if you are voting by absentee, you have to select which party ballots you'd like. You cannot just say, I'd like to request an absentee ballot. You have to select either Democrat or Republican ballots on the request sheet, or you will not be sent a ballot. Fully out, thank you.
We have open time for the public. Anybody? George?
I was gonna say something.
Okay.
No, just going to, talking about favorites, because of Haiti, I mean, that's very close to the country. It costs money. It's just so much money to be made enough. We could raise the price high enough. No, the cuts on that property. Keep that in mind. The same thing applies to the building inspector. You have an inspector in here full-time. Like, people from other places, like Holyoke, I think are the regional setups you were talking about, and all this saves us some money. By the time we get down to the bottom line, we end up costing some, but we don't get an inspector. Building inspector isn't here, we need him at night, in the middle of a fire or a problem. Should keep that in mind.
Those are very valid points.
Nobody's trying to cut back, cut things, because things are really tight to say the least. We're in a hole of seven hundred thousand, whatever we're in a hole for, but how much money does a building inspector generate? If he misses something, if he's not here, it's a void. Keep that in mind. When you go down here and say, hey, we're gonna save a hundred thousand dollars. Quite often, you know, we end up breaking even and we don't have coverage. I think they, I think they hit the nail on the head. Somebody in here is watching this place.
Thank you.
And I think Richie's done a heck of a job, because he's been here.
Thank you. Anybody else? Not yet. Heather, I'm gonna skip you. Shocking, really. We have fiscal fifteen budget and related discussion.
Alright, so just an update on that. We did have an department head meeting last week. We referenced everyone again to the budget. I'm gonna follow my point anyway on this piece. We talked about purchase orders. We now have a purchase order system established in the town of Southampton. Any new, essentially, any purchases of goods or services over five hundred dollars require a purchase order. Right now, we have a, essentially, it's a paper system. They submit a form via Excel, which they can get either from their email or they can get it on the shared drive. They put in their information, print it out, sign it, send it over to the email, fax or in person. Once I receive it, I look it over, I then take in the information in our software right program, which links over to the treasurer and the accountant's software, make sure the money's in the account, make sure they're not purchasing a one-hundred printer that we don't need. Once everything looks good, we put it through. I print out the approved purchase order, sign it, fax it, scan the email, hand it over to them and they're good to go with their purchase. You know, purchase order, again, just to remind folks, is a rough estimate of what the item costs. Sometimes you don't know exactly, but you give it your best guess. So I think if you're gonna spend six hundred dollars, maybe it was six oh two, maybe it was five forty-eight, but it's a guess. It can always be adjusted once the item comes in, but at least the monkey's already encumbered for the most part.
In order to keep a handle on this and, you know, you're getting it, is there any way for us to see what's coming through over five hundred dollars?
We can print out, we can print out a report. Plus, you're gonna see, as Vicki had mentioned before, you know how you get the expenses and revenue reports? Well, there's gonna be another column added to the expenses report that we now that will say encumbered. So you'll kinda know what's already out there. The encumbered, the only way the column was created was for purchase orders. So anything that's already out there in a purchase order will be encumbered in that.
Okay.
Other things with budget, we did talk about the budget again. At the department head meeting, we've also been meeting with some of the departments to go over what we're doing with the budgets. We've been talking with department heads who have the most to cut out of their budget or essentially the most reduced from the F I fourteen numbers and coming up with strategic ways to do so. We have a couple of proposals on the table, but until we finish things down, especially if there's union in case, we're not writing to announce those out loud yet. Working on unveiling up those details. Otherwise, we're trying to come up with as creative solutions as we can. We're working on having, cutting costs on our end as much as we can. And we'll see where we go, we have more to report on that as well. But we are working as closely as we can with all the different departments to see where we're going, between myself, Vicki and Donna. Watch the numbers and make sure that we can think ahead of time where we're going with regards to if someone has to cut, you know, five thousand dollars in their budget off the top, where that five thousand is gonna initially come from. So we don't have to worry about stopping, spending at the end, but rather be proactive from the beginning.
Okay.
So only that.
We have the town clerk's current fee schedule and recommendations for changes. The finance committee has met to review the town clerk fees and compared them with the Commonwealth's fees on average. And the finance committee has some recommendations on the fees that should be adopted.
Did you give a copy of my draft?
I saw, I saw.
I emailed out to everybody with-
Yeah.
While I was on vacation.
I'm just saying, yes, yeah.
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 Hold on.
I have one copy to share.
I looked at them, I thought they were good.
Well, let me just preface this with, given the feedback of the override finance committee, like all of us are very concerned about raising revenues and cutting costs. We decided we're gonna review all the fee schedules in the town. And we started with the town clerk's fees. Looking with Heather, we looked at a number of fee schedules from other towns. And Janine met with us today and agreed, she had looked at them too, and they are quite low. And so we drafted the fee schedule, all of which I think everybody agreed on, except the last two items are books that the historical society is selling through the town, and so we shouldn't, we can't change those. Just leave those what they, as they work, twelve dollars and ten dollars a piece. But we did add some things, copies by copy machine and by computer, certified copies, amended record, discontinuance of business certificate. Those are just standard charges that, you know, we should be charging and other towns charge for. We, one of the select boards looked at these. We ran into a bit of a snag this evening when Janine raised the issue of authority on approval of fees, schedules. And it wasn't quite clear within the bylaws who could approve these. There's some thought that maybe dog licenses have to go to town meeting, maybe the town clerk can approve these increases. It's very unclear, so Heather's gonna check with the, I guess, the town attorney and state law. And we can, so we can do all this very legally and increase these fees. We were just talking about that particular fee earlier. I think probably a number of them are quite low because they probably haven't been looked at very recently. But we, our intent is to come back periodically with a recommendation, you know, a fee schedule recommendation for various departments.
If these fees were changed to what you recommended, how much revenue would that generate for the town?
I don't know. It's really gonna be a drop in the bucket, but we're, we gotta look at all these drops.
Right.
And we had to cross the board. If people don't wanna support this town through their property taxes, they're gonna have to support it other ways. That's the only way we're gonna stay afloat, and we're gonna have to look at everything. We're also working on a long-term financial plan, saying we really have recommendations in there about, you know, ways that we think costs might be better controlled.
You know, I saw on the clerk's gas permits, where is she collecting gas? Why is she doing that?
I don't know. That was in there.
She'd be under the building department.
I think so.
I don't know why that's in there. Is that just a fee? Is that just a fee? Do people know what it is?
Yeah.
But still, we would have to go, I would assume you have to go to the building department and tap.
Well, we're gonna totally need the building department to do these too.
The one thing, just to point out, so folks don't think they pulled numbers out of a hat, that would be really exciting, but we have other things to do. Instead, what we did was I sent an email to the MMPA lister, which by the way is for the human resources. So a lot of these people were fantastic in the communities around the state. And some of them went out of their way and pulled the information from the clerk's offices from themselves directly. And some of them went and actually sent me an email to the clerk's office and the clerk got back to me. We heard back from over thirty easily clerks. I still have like five or six in my email I haven't forwarded yet, because I got them today when the email was down. But over thirty clerks and human resource directors and others responded back with fees. One thing that's really interesting is what we really did was we didn't go above and beyond where the average was. We just brought the numbers to the average.
Right.
So like the average cost of a birth certificate in Massachusetts or for marriage, birth or death certificate is ten dollars. Some are higher, a few are lower, and by a few, I mean like a handful of less than five. And we brought it to ten. So all we did with this-
It's currently three. It shouldn't be ten.
So we raised it by seven. So these would be considered more like a usage fee. So if you're gonna use the service, you're gonna pay for it. And the idea is, and this makes practical sense, is you're paying for the cost of the service. So if you're gonna get a birth certificate, you're paying for the cost it takes for someone, the portion of the time it takes them to type it out, paying for the cost of the paper, paying for the cost of the ink, you know, that's what you're paying for, which makes sense. You should, you know, you should recoup the cost it takes. It's not like we're making an excessive profit. We're just trying to recover the cost of the actual material that we're utilizing. So.
So anyway, I'm not asking for any action tonight because it's gonna clarify the authority issue. But we will be sending these to, and I hope that, you know, it will be approved and we can institute a more, you know, more reasonable and, you know, contemporary fee schedule.
Okay.
I understand-
Thank you.
Go ahead, John.
I understand at the, I point to, I'm gonna do it forever, but at the transfer station, the bags went up also?
Uh, yeah, they went up.
Yeah, they did.
By fifty, fifty percent, wasn't it?
What's that?
Fifty percent, from ten to fifteen or something?
Yeah, but we've been charging a dollar from what I understand for twenty-plus years. Anybody else on this is three or four dollars. Just can't sustain the cost of a dollar a bag to cover the cost.
Right.
You want, or the board of health passed, passed the piece?
I can, yeah, I can. I don't know. Can she take those minutes to read?
Or is this the only copy?
No, you can't take my minutes.
Alright, that's- Sorry. Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see. We're down to the regionalization possibilities. Heather's met with John Lumbrough from the city of Holyoke and has some options to report.
So I talked to John from the city treasurer's, uh, sorry, city, what is he, city?
The treasurer's office.
City treasurer, he is. That sounds about right, yeah. He's an elected official over there. So he's very nice. We met for about an hour, maybe it was a little bit longer. We had talked after, we had initially spoken with the building commissioner position. I told him we were all settled. We talked about other things. They are very interested in Holyoke, you know, lowering their own costs as well, just like we are. So they wanted to see what our options were and how we could possibly work together as two communities. They do border us for a certain portion of area. And there are spots in town where we would be able to get to Holyoke faster than they would be able to get to Holyoke. And there's probably even areas of Southampton that they can get to rather quickly. Faster than, you know, for instance, where we have volunteer fire department. Someone would be able to come from home, get in the truck and get it there. They would be there while on scene saying, hey, how's it going? Well, before, we're even thinking about where the truck is. So we've been looking at various things, leaving essentially no stone unturned. Looked at everything from, you know, going from pretty much every single department we could look at, just to see what the options were and start turning things over. So we started over in the building department. We looked at board of health. We looked at inspectors' options. We looked over at dispatch. We looked over at fire. We looked over at ambulance. We looked at animal inspector. We looked at dog officer. Is there anything else I missed on? I think those are our major pieces. So that's what we've looked at. We have some more information that, you know, we're trying to develop some possible ideas and just see how it would work. A lot of the time, we have people who are almost busy enough to be full-time all the time, but they have enough that, you know, they could be more full-time or better justified full-time if they have some additional work over here. We have a lot of stuff over here that I don't think is necessarily one hundred percent forty-hour kind of work, but would work great for someone who's, you know, doing twenty hours there and twenty hours here, because they have such a full staff over there. The other thing that's nice is a lot of the stuff is state law. If not as specific as the building commissioner zoning officer fees, where you, you know, like I said, it's a dialect of the language. This stuff is more generalized. It's the state code. You apply state code everywhere. It's kinda like what I say, you know, once you're a building inspector, you're a building inspector. Building inspector is a building inspector is a building inspector. Is it falling apart? Is it condemned? It is, or it isn't. Is it allowed in the zone? Is it not allowed in the zone? Well, it has. So, you know, it differs. But, you know, when it comes down to the other thing, it's a lot simpler. He started putting some numbers together for us pertaining to some of those other positions I was talking about, or seeing where we can go with those. Some of the other things I mentioned, like the dispatch piece, that gets a little more dicey. That is something PBPC is actually also involved in, because there's lots of grants out there. And there's a grant that they're actually involved in helping Holyoke try to obtain where Holyoke are, because of the funding out there. That is something we would need to actually involve both of the chiefs then, PBPC, Holyoke and ourselves. They would actually like to come at the next meeting and just give you a little presentation on what's happening and what they're looking at. And I've also already briefed Charlie Knecht from Public Safety Complex on it, because that's obviously a huge part of the public safety complex. Before we go into more detail, like, we wanna sit down with both the chiefs and see where they take on that.
I guess I'm gonna, I'm gonna say their take is that they don't wanna do it. They're gonna give us a lot of reasons. But I also gotta say that I think we need to investigate it wherever it goes. Again, if we ask everybody, and like Jackie, and I know her point, asking an applicant, what you're gonna do better than this. The applicant has everything to say about it because it's gonna affect them personally. The chiefs are gonna, not gonna wanna do anything. They're gonna come up with reasons. And in a sane world where we have plenty of money, I think we'd all agree a hundred percent with them. But it's not the sane world that we're-
Well, I still think it's the right thing to do is to tell them first before-
Oh, no, absolutely, absolutely.
They should be all brought in the loop.
No, they've gotta be part of the whole process. It's just that we've gotta look at it as, we're gonna get jaded opinions from department heads because that's their livelihood. And same thing would happen to me at work if somebody asked me, you know, I'd say the same thing. So it's no fault. It's just, I think we need to go into it knowing that.
So they're planning to come on the twenty-ninth?
John Troy and then John McPBC will be here the twenty-ninth. That's why I said it'd be great, because John will be here the twenty-ninth.
Well, I think at least as a courtesy, the two chiefs are made aware of it to be here.
Yes, well, I was planning to speak with them each ahead of time.
Okay.
So that they know what's hap, at least they know what we're looking at. You know, they, I'm sure, will have a strong opinion one way or the other, but at least they know what's happening ahead of time.
And they've gotta be involved.
It's not, it's not the same all the way.
Yeah, if we're looking at regionalization opportunities, I mean, to me at least, East Hampton and even Northampton would be a good synergy. East Hampton, at least mentally for me, it's contiguous to Southampton rather than Holyoke. I think of it as going like this to Holyoke, but you're right, there may be certain things we can do easily.
Well, there's also things you have to remember too, where Holyoke is much bigger than we are. They offer the ability to be a much better, bigger sister than someone like East Hampton, who they're only slightly bigger.
Should we ask them? Should we reach out to East Hampton and see if they're interested in any of those?
Well, we can. There's never any harm in asking.
Westfield?
But, you know, the West, Westfield too. The one thing I wanna remember is too, you know, where the nice thing about things like Holyoke is the back end, you know. If you look at their building inspection office, they have like seven people. What does that mean? Well, that means someone pretty much specializes in everything. So if you have an issue like, if, for, just, I'm not saying to do this, I'm just saying this as an example. But if you regionalize like the healthy injury position, right, you would essentially say, okay, we have someone for septic. We have perk test today. All you send over the person can do a perk test. Okay, well, today we have inspections of the businesses. What you send over the person is business inspection. You know what I mean? Like, there's someone over there who pretty much specializes in these.
I mean, I know how you're explaining it. That's not how I would envision it, you know, only because I don't wanna lose. We're gonna need, it's gonna be different if we do go along with that, but we do need a personal contact here.
Have somebody different for all those things.
That can be associated with Southampton and things can get done that way. That's why I hate to see a contractor deal with a different inspector every time and say, he said that was alright before and you told me it's changed?
Right.
You need consistency.
Well, let me throw something as we're talking, of regionalization. I'm gonna go back to the building inspector, because you brought that up when we were talking about it. It may not work at all, but we're gonna have to take a little hit on this and people aren't gonna be as happy. But if it was to save us enough money and give us all the services we need, four or five days- But if it was to save us enough money and give us all the services we need four or five days a week, can we say our building inspector is in East Hampton? And anybody who wants a building permit goes to East Hampton? And they will have the people there all their regular hours, whether it's East Hampton or Southampton, you can go in and get a building permit, or enforcement or something like that. Do we have to have a person right here? Can we expand our services to, you know, forty hours? I mean, that's just an opportunity that's out there.
Or you could say you have twenty hours here, and if it's on the off time, then you have to go to East Hampton.
Work out something like that, so.
We're, we're not gonna be right all the time. We're, we're gonna make mistakes, but we're gonna learn from them.
Yeah.
This is a tough next year. And the following year, unless it gets some kind of a change in the way people think about how to run the departments, it's gonna be very difficult.
I think our goal should be in general is, whatever free cash we get going into the next year, it stays free cash. And that's gonna take a lot of decisions upfront here. Gotta keep Heather busy.
I don't think there's a lot of free cash, you have to see how.
Oh, you know what I'm saying, though.
Oh, I'd say it's approximately a hundred thousand, give or take. But we have, we don't know what our last revenues were from the past couple months.
Well, here, here's the other thing too, is if a department comes in the next three or four months and says, I got a truck that's down, it's gonna cost me twenty thousand, we don't have it. Either we fix it and cut it, but the bottom line of the budget is, this is what you have to live with.
Yeah.
You have to take care of all these unforeseen things that comes in and adjust accordingly.
I mean, we are gonna get such pushback, and we're gonna be looked at like the bad guys. But, you know, the election's the election, it was pretty clear.
Well, we already have the issue where we have to spend money for.
The tank.
The tanks, which is gonna cost us.
It's gonna cost some money.
Yeah.
But that can't come out of this budget.
No, so either that comes out.
That's all the department.
That would either come out of free cash, or you do it as a loan, which means you.
Or a bonded.
If you bond it and do it as debt, the next year, what that means, it takes more money from your budget.
Alright. Or we go to a stabilization account, get it passed by the town meeting for that.
Or, I mean, that's something we could always do a debt exclusion for.
But you still.
Because those have been successful in the past.
Well, we're probably gonna have to deal, live with a much smaller capacity, well, by my, uh, because the dollar amount for equal capacity you have now is way too much.
We're gonna lose staffing somewhere, let's face it.
Do you want to move to your town minister's report?
No, I don't have anything else to add. This week, all I have is the purchasing orders. A lot of this stuff is just, um, various constituent issues that we've been working with. Um, three of the issues are zoning issues. So, um, that's one of the issues, like I said before, which is really important, is to make sure we have someone who is well-versed in zoning. Because even when Rich was here, we still spent quite a bit of my time and his time dealing with zoning issues and constituents. We tried to deal, our, our approach has always been to try to deal with the issues the best we can, to try to help everyone come to the best resolution we can without having to go to another level.
I agree.
Our next meeting is July twenty-ninth, the Tuesday. We're gonna move into executive session. We're not coming back into open session. True story. Any, uh, motion to move into executive session by roll call vote, please?
Before we do that, we had two possible executive sessions.
We don't need them.
We don't need them.
Just do the one from medical.
Just one.
Martin, I?